Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for April 4th, 2022. The first order agenda this evening will be the approval of the minutes from March 21st, 2022. Any board members have any comments or corrections on the minutes from our last meeting on March 21st?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 21st.
Okay, we have a motion made. We have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. Those minutes are approved. Moving along, we have continued our business from the hearing, which is a site plan review and special permit. 773-735 Broadway Street. Boston Capital has applied to Lowell Planning Board and Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for a site plan review, special permit, and variance approval to redevelop an existing historic mill building at the above address into 53 affordable units. The project includes the redevelopment of the existing structure as well as the construction of an addition to include additional housing, a management office, and parking. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The project requires site plan review approval per Section 11.4 and special permit approval per Section 11.5 from the Lowell Planning Board. The project will also require various of approval, assuming that 5.1, Section 5.2, Section 5.3, and Section 6.1 from Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. This matter was last before us back on December 6th. It was a continuation to this meeting. There was a request at that time for a traffic study. Motion was made and then continued. We did have a couple of neighbors speak in opposition and made me gauge to traffic and parking and that the site was overutilized. Let me just pull that up. Yes, we had two people. Roseanne from Walker Street stated that there was heavy traffic and there's very little parking in the area. She said there was significant traffic, no parking, the area is dense. She expressed concern about the number of units. And we also heard from Grace Zoohu from Wall Street, who's indicated that there's not enough parking in the area and the UMass Lowell students take up all the parking. She believes the project would make the area too crowded. And it's indicated this motion made to continue to get a traffic study. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's William Martin, attorney with offices at 491 Dutton Street, appearing here on behalf of the applicant, Boston Capital. Thought I should just briefly summarize what's happened since we were here back in December. Since that time, we've been to the Zoning Board of Appeals and they've granted approval of the project. We've also been to the Lowell Historic Board, which has also approved the project. There was a question at the hearing about access to Ting Street. We commissioned a title examination on Ting Street and subsequently received an easement deed from the fee owner on Ting Street to solve that issue. I know from the Lowell Housing Authority, who's represented by attorney Kevin Murphy, who's here tonight, we met with the Housing Authority and they have asked us to accept four conditions on the project, if you're so inclined, to grant the approval. Happy to get into those, but all those conditions are acceptable to the applicant. I know the board asked for a traffic study to be commissioned. We have done that, as well as the peer review. I know there are a few outstanding issues under the peer review and the traffic study and happy to get into the details of those as well. As a result of the hearings at the Zoning Board and the Historic Board, there have been some design changes to the project, we think for the better, mostly to reduce the view of scale, you know, to step back some of the upper floors so it doesn't create such a canyon wall effect on the project. And so I think it might be helpful to start off and hear the architects summarize the design changes. With me this evening is Rich Mizaki, the applicant from Boston Capital, Cliff Bomer, the architect from Davis Square Associates, Liz Altman, our traffic engineer from the engineering company, and Brian Gudrow from Hancock Associates, the site engineers. So happy to answer any questions, but I think it may be of use to the board if you're so inclined to hear from the architect and he can describe in brief detail what's changed in the scope of the project. Is that acceptable?
Yes, Council, thank you.
Okay. Cliff?
Hi, everybody, and thanks for hearing us tonight. I'm Cliff Bomer. I'm a principal at Davis Square Architects in Somerville, Mass. Somebody other than me is running the slideshow so we could... Great, okay. Again, thank you very much. I wanted to emphasize that one thing our attorney pointed out, which is there have been changes primarily in the aesthetics of the building. We had the good fortune of working with the Historic Board on multiple occasions, culminating in our hearing with them last week where we did get an 8-0 unanimous decision. I think they really brought a lot to the project and we were very happy to work with them to get to where we are at this point. So we could start running through the slides. The basics, I think you know from before, there are 52 apartments, 52 parking spaces for those spaces are accessible spaces. We're also providing bike parking, one bike space per unit. Again, I just quickly go through these stats and we can look at the pictures that are always more interesting. The unit breakdown, again, we have 52 apartments. It's a rental development. Twenty-one of them are one bedroom, 26 are two bedrooms, and five are three bedrooms. The size of the units is pretty consistent throughout. The one bedrooms range from 630 to about 680 square feet. The two bedrooms are 860 square feet to 900 square feet, and the three bedrooms are 1,000 square feet to 1,100. All of these sizes conform with standards promulgated by the Department of Housing and Community Development where the project will be seeking most of its funding. The gross square footage of the building is around 70... it approaches 75,000 square feet. There are three residential... now I'll switch over to the pictures. So what you're looking at is a four-story building. Most of the first level is parking. The... actually, is that the first slide? Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Sorry. So this is the Broadway... this is a view from Broadway, so we're slightly south of the development on Broadway, looking up Ting Street where those two cars are parked. That's Ting Street, which is on the east side. So we've crossed over the canal at this point. We're looking to the east on Ting. A big part of what the review with the Historic Board did was help us really modulate the facade of the building to a much greater degree, as well as carrying some of the important horizontal lines from the original building. If you look far down Ting Street, you see the Housing Authority building, which is an adaptive reuse of actually what is part of our building that continues off to the east. So the big changes for us were really more articulation. The board also had some opinions about colors that we thought were good ideas as well. But you're looking at the primary entry of the building, which is on Broadway. All right, well, I'll tell you the materials that you're looking at. The two kind of shoulders closest to you that are rendered as brick, those are indeed going to be masonry. Most of the rest of the building is either cementitious panel materials or cementitious clapboard materials that we think works very well with the existing context of the neighborhood. Next slide is on Schaefer Street. So Schaefer Street is on the west side of the development. The brick part of the building that you see prominently at the lower two levels, that is part of the historic building that we are saving. I think one thing that our neighbor on Schaefer Street will be very happy about, if you look at the upper... in the upper right-hand corner, there's the before condition. Right now, there is virtually zero setback for that neighbor on Schaefer Street because there's a very large brick freezer building that the food bank uses for food storage. So we're eliminating that building to create a generous landscapable setback from our neighbor on Schaefer Street to our south. The next slide, another view from... now you've passed our building, you're still on Schaefer Street. You get a little glimpse of the Housing Authority development at the far-left part of the slide. So this is... you're getting a look at the extension of the historic building that we're preserving, and then we're continuing the building towards the east that creates... it closes off the courtyard, as the existing building does, closes off the courtyard that's defined by the Housing Authority development adjacent to us, to the north. As you can see, the existing conditions are... can use some help, and of course, we would restore that with fully historic standards maintained. Actually, all of our window proportions in our new buildings were designed to be sympathetic with the proportions of the historic building. Again, a lot of this input came from the Historic Board. We can look at the next one. I'll quickly run through plans. In this plan, Broadway is to the right and goes up vertically on the page. Ting Street is at the top of the sheet, and remember, right across from Ting Street is the canal, a nicely landscaped area around the canal. Another piece, I'm probably giving too much credit to the historic input, but they were very keen on us making that a very important elevation because the park is, as you know, going to get some renovations and a lot of people are going to enjoy that green space. So we put a lot of definition and detail into that, what's the eastern facade of our building. Briefly, there are no residences on the first floor. It is primarily parking and then typical resident support areas, management office, conference room, trash area, bicycle parking, sort of the normal things that you would expect to see in a rental development of this scale. From there on up, the units stack. We do step back. You can go to the next slide, please. We do pull the building back to really accentuate the historic pieces that we are retaining. You can see those rendered. Those are the darkest rendered. Parts of that floor plan are the historic envelope that we're saving and then stepping back so that it really is an important feature and the scale is preserved from the street. A lot of the articulation of the building is done through bays that are in the living rooms of all of the apartments. Continuing up, it stacks pretty uniformly up through the fourth floor, so there are, again, three residential levels on top of the parking. You can keep going, that may be all of mine. You can... there you go. What's the next one? Yeah, okay. As you can see, there's not a whole lot to add to that. We do have laundry rooms, again, just typical support spaces for rental development, shared laundry rooms. The next slide, please. Okay. So here you can see, these are important to note because... so this is the elevation on Broadway. So you see the entry piece to the right. We've shaded the rest of the elevations because, as you can imagine from knowing the site, that most of those... the elevations that we have shaded out a bit or screened out a bit are largely screened by existing homes on the street, both on Broadway and on Schaefer Street. You can go to the next one. We did carry that strong horizontal datum all the way around the building. This is the elevation along Ting Street. So this is the eastern elevation. The garage door is immediately adjacent to the historic piece of the building that we're preserving on the far-right-hand side of the screen. Remember that that piece that you see three bays of connects onto a very long elevation that is a continuation of what was that same shoe factory that is occupied now by the Housing Authority. Next slide, please. This is the view from Schaefer Street. Again, we've kind of screened out the area because most of what you would see on that side is actually screened by existing construction in the foreground, but we wanted to show you the full elevation. So you can see that we're carrying the same idea of that rhythm of the bays in these renderings, that kind of gold color bay continues all the way around the building. Next one, please. Yeah, that's our final elevation that you would see from the parking area on the... I'm sorry, from the Housing Authority on the north side. So that's a piece then that is, again, creating closure for the Housing Authority's courtyard. We've maintained the same passageway from Schaefer Street into that courtyard that exists now because we're preserving that piece of the historic building that accepts the gate that privatizes that space for the Housing Authority. That may be the last slide. Yeah. I think at this point, we can pass it over to civil... we do have landscape plan. That is what this plan is. It's our first pass on landscape plan. I think probably what we're offering the community that is a... it just doesn't exist now because the entire space is impervious surface. At the end of this... at the end of the development of this project, we're actually creating quite a lot of usable outdoor space. The current site, as I said, is 100% impervious. There's no accommodations made for stormwater management in the existing design. So we're really bringing the kind of site design into the 21st century with real stormwater management as well as generous landscaping to provide some buffering, even though most of the buffering of the building is actually done by existing homes on Schaefer Street and Broadway. And next, we also did submit a lighting plan that I think is in your package. I think the... about all I would say about the lighting plan is we're, you know, fully conforming with dark sky fixtures. That's critical to us. And of course, we'll have no spillover of the lighting from our development onto neighbors. Generally speaking, we like to keep lighting pretty subtle and not overly light developments for the benefit of the neighbors. And the next slide... is that the end? Oh, okay. All right. So that's all I have architecturally. Certainly, any questions you have, I hope I can answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all we have by way of presentation, but certainly we have, you know, our traffic people here and site engineers. We're happy to respond to questions from the board at the appropriate time, but that's it for the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Council. So at this time, we have received, let's see, three letters, so I'll read those into the record, and then I'll turn it over to anybody in the public who wants to speak this evening. One is from Coalition for a Better Acre. I am writing to express my support of the redevelopment proposal for the former Merrimack Valley Food Bank property by the Boston Capital Development LLC, located at 733-735 Broadway Street in the heart of the Acre neighborhood. This project will add up to 52 units of affordable housing at the site of the old Merrimack Valley Food Bank. The original building will be carefully demolished, preserving the historic aspects to make way for a single structure that will add much-needed affordable housing to this section of the neighborhood. Parking will be on-site with 52 spaces on the ground floor with additional common spaces for residents, including a management office, community room, fitness center, computer/workspace, craft room for kids, and a bike storage room. Excuse me. I hope that the planning board will view this transformation project in a favorable light in the permitting process. I look forward to the addition of new affordable units in the city. Very truly yours, Yung Jang Choi. Excuse me. Then we have another one from Stephen Stoll, Administrator Historic Board. Wanted to let you know that Historic Board meeting held on March 31st, the board voted unanimous with eight of nine members present to approve Boston Capital Development's affordable housing project at the above address. Please note that as part of the design review for the project ahead of the public hearing, which included input by myself, as well as the Lowell National Historic Park, OcuTech, and the Board, Boston Society, and OcuTech, AIA member OcuTech, their recommendations regarding scale, mass, setbacks, materials, were all taken into account by the project team and included in the plans presented and approved. Special consideration was given to ensuring that the new construction was in scale with the adjacent mill structure and also responded contextually to the adjacent Pawtucket Canal God Locks Complex and Canal Walkway. Attention was paid to the setting back of the upper two stories as well as utilizing a lighter material color to make those two stories appear to be less prominent. The lower two stories' relationship with the adjacent mill structure was also reinforced through materials and colors, as well with a strong intermediate... with less prominent chronicles were utilized to the upper two stories, further adding in a less prominent appearance for those stories. Window size and location were also regularized, creating a more appropriate relationship ratio between the solid of the walls and the void of the windows, which also was tested in keeping the windows in scale with the windows of the adjacent mill structure. In addition, the long elevation of the new construction along Ting Street is consistent with that of the adjoining mill structure and further reinforcements that built edge along the street. With the exception of the Ting Street and Broadway Street elevations, very little of the new construction will be seen from Broadway and Schaefer Street, and it is screened by existing... excuse me, existing residential construction. Overall, the design of the new construction is consistent with the approach taken for prior new construction approved by the board and the district. A balance is sought between the new and the old, so the new design is contemporary and does not replicate historic structures, create false or fake history. At the same time, though, historic context and character must be respected in terms of scale, massing, height, proportions, and materials, which is what has been accomplished with the project on Broadway Street. Stephen Stoll, Administrator Lowell Historic Board. One other matter we have, I am writing this letter first as a resident of Lowell, but I would like to be missed if I didn't disclose right away that I am an employee of the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. I want to express my thoughts on the project proposed by Boston Capital to the purchase of the building on 733-735 Broadway Street in Lowell, which currently houses the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. I've lived in this city for the better part of my life and have seen the changes throughout the city, paying most attention to post-2003 when I became a homeowner and began to pay taxes. Misveil of state being at all-time high and the lack of affordable housing continually on the rise, the proposed housing could start a trend within the city that not only would be visually appealing, but would also raise the area in which the structure will stand. In addition to that, the new building brings more revenue to the city. Until I worked at the food bank, I wasn't in a position to see the congestion and struggle of the area. Set near the university where traffic can be an ongoing issue, our parking lot is a busy lot and challenging, more often than not, for truck drivers to enter and exit the parking lot. The road being narrow and with cars sometimes parked on either side of the street, it's a daunting task for a lot of our deliveries to make it to our dock. I'm writing in favor of the proposal project, and I feel as a resident of Lowell, having a building, like the proposed building, would be a breath of fresh air to the area. Aside from the aesthetics of the building, it will offer hope to add affordable housing, which our city is in desperate need of. The project may open an opportunity for other entities to take further development in other areas of the city that would assist in diminishing the affordable housing crisis. I appreciate your time and attention to this email, and please do not hesitate to reach out if you have any questions or concerns. Best regards, Roberta Emerson.
We'll put those matters into record, the three that we received. I believe those are the only letters we received. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members if they have any questions or concerns. Oh, Mr. Murphy. I'm sorry. They said you had four conditions that you want to speak on, or... Sure, absolutely, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm sorry I wasn't here at the previous meeting, rightfully so. The notice was sent to the Francis Gatehouse Mill, which is the abutter of the property, but by the time it got to the main office and then to me is that the meeting had already taken place. But I would just like to address the board briefly tonight, if I could, about some of the issues that we have, the Lowell Housing Authority, with this proposal. First and foremost, we're 100% in favor of affordable housing. That is our mission as the Lowell Housing Authority, is to promote affordable housing. And we want to do everything we can to promote this affordable housing, and we've had great meetings with the developer to address some of the current concerns that we have, and we're hoping that the board adopts some of the agreements that we have reached with the developer. First and foremost, believe it or not, the Lowell Housing Authority purchased the Francis Gatehouse Mill in 1977. Shortly thereafter, the Lowell Housing Authority redeveloped the Francis Gatehouse Mill into affordable housing, and it has remained affordable housing since probably the early 80s. And since that time, the Lowell Housing Authority has maintained Ting Street, which is the thoroughfare that is the access to the Francis Gatehouse Mill. We've paved it, we've plowed it, we've maintained it for all of these years. And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, if I could approach the board to give a picture of Ting Street?
Sure, absolutely, Council.
And the petition has previously received this... And the petitioner has previously received this. I've had our engineer do a depiction of Ting Street, as you can see it, on the plan coming from Broadway. And as you can see, there's the Merrimack Valley Food Bank proposal, which is to the upward end of Ting Street. And then below Ting Street is the Hadley House. And then Ting Street leads into the Francis Gatehouse Mill. And one of the things that we have been doing for 30 years is using Ting Street as parking for the employees of the Lowell Housing Authority and residents of the Francis Gatehouse Mill. And you can see, we did an overhead picture of Ting Street, and you can see that there are cars parked there along Ting Street that are Lowell Housing Authority employees and residents of the Francis Gatehouse Mill. And if you were to walk on Ting Street, like I did today, you would see that there is a fence in between Ting Street and the Merrimack Valley Food Bank that includes signs that say, "Parking Reserve for Employees of the Lowell Housing Authority." So our major concern is preserving the right to park on Ting Street. And we have met with the developer, and I think we have come up with a proposal that would accommodate the Lowell Housing Authority. And if, again, Mr. Chairman, if I could approach the board? Is, and the petitioner has provided, actually, he's provided these conditions to us after our meeting, and so they have a copy of this that I'm presenting to you.
Thank you.
So we met with the developer, and we've come up with four conditions that if you were so inclined to grant relief to the petitioner, we would ask that the proposed conditions that I have submitted to you be attached to the decision. And first of all, and most important to us, is that the 16 parking spots that we now utilize on Ting Street be preserved for the use of the Lowell Housing Authority employees and residents of the Francis Gatehouse Mill. Because we just suspect, because quite honestly, we have some concerns with the amount of parking spaces that the developer is proposing. I mean, one per unit. We have concerns with that. And we just think that some of these residents will be utilizing these parking spots on Ting Street as overflow parking for their development. So we want to make sure we preserve 16 parking spots for the Lowell Housing Authority. Second thing, of course, these are elderly people who reside at the premises, and we're just trying to keep their quiet enjoyment in mind. And we're asking that a condition be imposed that construction would begin at 8:00 a.m. rather than 7:00 a.m. and conclude at 5:00 p.m. We're also asking that Ting Street is a private way, and it should be not used as a recreational area for the residents of the new development. I mean, you have three-bedroom units there. I mean, there's going to be kids living at this development. And, you know, Ting Street is only 40 feet wide. And residents coming down from the Francis Gatehouse Mill, we don't want, we don't want a dangerous situation to occur where children are riding their bikes up and down Ting Street and probably get into some issues with a car coming down Ting Street. And finally, we were asking, and we know, it's been represented to us that the funding mechanism that the developer is using to develop this proposal will not allow for college students, graduate students, to reside there. But we still would ask that a condition be imposed that no college or graduate housing be allowed on the premises. So, again, we are fully in favor of affordable housing. We're not objecting to that. But we do have concerns about the parking. And we're just asking that the board consider these conditions to preserve the rights that we have had on Ting Street for over 30 years. I don't, it didn't come as an issue previously, but Attorney Martin called me earlier today and said, "Veness Hagan," should I bring that up right now, if you don't mind? Is that Veness Hagan came with an opinion this morning that there should be no parking for 40 feet up Ting Street for fire apparatus to make a turn into Ting Street. We strenuously object to that recommendation by Veness Hagan. If you were to impose a 40-foot no-parking requirement up Ting Street, we would probably use, lose, four parking spots of the 16 parking spots that we now use on Ting Street. And just by way of edification, as I called the housing manager this afternoon of Francis Gatehouse Mill, and I asked her, I said, "You know, how often does the Lowell Fire Department show up to the Francis Gatehouse Mill?" And believe it or not, it's merely on a daily basis that the fire department shows up to the Francis Gatehouse Mill. The usual reason is that they have very sensitive smoke detectors, and somebody will burn something in their kitchen or start the smoke, and the smoke alarm goes off. And the fire department shows up either for fire or for a medical emergency. And I asked her, "Have you had any complaints whatsoever about the ability for the fire apparatus to turn into Ting Street?" And she said, "They have never had any complaints whatsoever." So as far as the recommendation from Veness Hagan to have a 40-foot no-parking zone on Ting Street, we would ask that that would not be allowed because it would, it's not necessary, and it would seriously impact the parking that we have on Ting Street. I thank you very much for your consideration. And if you have any questions, I'll be here. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. At this point in time, is anybody here likes to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor?
Good evening. My name is Deb Shosse, and I live at 10 Dayton Street in Lowell. I am also the longstanding executive director of House of Hope Shelter and House of Hope Housing, and I love Lowell. Boston Capital has been a supporter of House of Hope since 2004, beginning with the giving of Christmas presents to our families and later becoming the primary corporate funder of our Learn to Work internship program offered to some of the 97 families in our shelters and in our apartments. This support is in excess of $45,000 each year. Boston Capital has also supported House of Hope in our own housing development by offering us the expertise and compassion of their recently-retired CFO, Mark Teal, who served as our organization's board president throughout many of our own development projects. We are also familiar with the architects for 733 Broadway, as Cliff Bomer and Davis Square Architects have been our architects on recent projects, including the creative historic preservation and construction of 17 units at 98 Smith Street. Davis Square Architects have also worked with the Coalition for a Better Acre. They know Lowell. I believe that I know both Boston Capital and Davis Square Architects. They are the right organizations to help Lowell develop some of the sorely needed workforce housing in Lowell. And Boston Capital has committed that a number of the apartments will be available for families currently living in shelter. I urge the planning board to support this much-needed project. 733 has a great team that knows and cares deeply for our community. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of this project. My name is Amy Pesia. I'm privileged to serve as the executive director at the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. I lived in Lowell for over 20 years, until just about 16 months ago, when I moved from the city. But I love the city as much as everybody in this room. On behalf of the Merrimack Valley Food Bank, I request your support for this development project. As you've heard, it's currently the site of the Merrimack Valley Food Bank, where we distribute up to 5 million pounds of food to people throughout the region. Just in Lowell, just since July, we've distributed over a million pounds of food to about 78,000 Lowell residents. We're fortunate to remain in this city where we began our mission back in 1991. And we've been living in this building at 733-735 Broadway Street since 1995, when it was donated to us by the Stagnon family that ran Lowell Fruit Company, as you may recall. There are numerous challenges, as my colleague mentioned in her letter in support of the project, of warehousing, receiving, distributing, in the current property. Although we love it, it's so representative of the city where we operate and the region that we serve in old mill buildings. Not only do the three levels pose a challenge in moving 5 million pounds of food, but the parking lot, as Mrs. Emerson mentioned in her letter, is a source of pain for so many people who live in the area. We had the closure of the Broadway Street Bridge for several years, and then the Pawtucket Street Bridge, all caused congestion, which is what people may be thinking of when they think of a lot of traffic in that area. And it backs up. It happens throughout the city in different places for different reasons. But imagine trying to get to work in the morning, and there's a tractor-trailer truck that needs to drive past our parking lot and then back in. You could be there for 15 minutes. I've experienced it personally numerous times. The increase in food distribution requires more deliveries because, as everybody knows, even before the pandemic, so many people needed help with food. But now the demand has really spiked beyond a number that we've ever imagined. So that means more trucks coming into the building. Sometimes four and five daily, sometimes they're there at the same time. We are surrounded by numerous multifamily housing units, as you know, and the 100 apartments behind us at Francis Gatehouse. We strive to be good neighbors, but many residents and commuters are inconvenienced on a daily basis by us being there. We love being there, we love our city, which is why we're seeking alternate properties to operate our food distribution mission. And development of the Broadway Street property by Boston Capital makes sense for all involved in the proposed project. The acre, our immediate neighbors, and those families who need conveniently-located affordable housing. And it would benefit the food bank naturally because we are required to distribute food efficiently to all of those people that rely on us to get food so that they can live, work, or look for work, and learn. We appreciate your consideration to support this development by Boston Capital. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me. Anybody else like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? So when we were here last, we requested that we had a peer review done for the traffic. So I know we had a peer review done for the traffic, and I see Mr. Dirk here is present. Welcome, Mr. Dirk. I appreciate you being present with us this evening. So I know he submitted some materials, then we submitted some more, then we received some more. So then we received some more as of today. So I'll just hear any comments you'd like to make at this time, Mr. Dirk. And from there, I'm sure we might have a couple of questions. So thank you very much for joining us. Again, I appreciate you being present with us tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you had mentioned, for the record, Jeffrey Dirk of Vannessen Associates. Just to clarify the record with respect to my colleagues at Veness Hagan and Breslin, were Vannessen Associates, same first name, different company. So again, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for allowing us to assist the board with the review of this project. As you had mentioned, we had conducted two reviews of the transportation analysis and the site plans for the project the applicant had submitted. And I don't know if the applicant had made a formal traffic presentation to you with respect to the impacts of the project. But we did undertake a review, as I said, of the initial traffic study. The first part of that review was really to make sure that the study was undertaken in accordance with standard protocols in terms of data collection, the analysis, the study area, things like that. And we did find that the study was prepared in accordance with appropriate standards. From the standpoint of the project and its impacts, it's going to generate about 330 vehicle trips on a daily basis. So it's not a large generator of traffic. And I'll characterize that in the context of Broadway Street, which accommodates just about 6,700 vehicles per day, two-way traffic. So the 330 gets added on top of that. And you can see, it's not a large percent increase in traffic. So with respect to the impacts, as the applicant had measured those impacts, it is not significant in that, as they looked at the Broadway Street corridor, delays increased by about 10 seconds. So it's not something that's really perceivable from that respect. What the average motorist would perceive is increases in queuing. So you heard some of the prior presenters talk about backups on the roadway. After this project is built, the backups or increases in queuing would be about one additional vehicle during the peak hour. So again, not a significant impact from the standpoint of delays or increases in queuing. Now, our review really focused on a couple of areas. The first is with respect to safety. That's probably the most important thing that we're looking at. Safety is, as we looked at it, with respect to the site itself, and we'll talk about some of the constrained conditions in a moment as it relates to both Ting Street, and there was mention about parking along Ting Street and emergency vehicle access. And then lastly, off-site, specifically at the Broadway-School Street intersection. So our comments, the recent set of comments you have, focus on those two areas. So the Broadway-School Street intersection, the applicant had undertaken a safety analysis of that intersection. The number of crashes that are happening at that intersection are very disproportionate to the volume of traffic. In fact, the crash rate at that intersection is over four times the state average. It's also listed as a high-crash location on the state's database of high-crash locations. For that reason, it's really incumbent upon looking at measures to improve safety before we add any additional traffic. And that's irrespective of any type of development project in the area. We think, as you've heard, this is a very good project. It provides much-needed housing. But we do have that intersection that does need to be addressed with respect to safety. What we've suggested from the standpoint of how the applicant may be able to advance safety improvements is its twofold approach. The first is to conduct a road safety audit at that intersection. The road safety audit is specifically focused on safety, and it's geared really towards working with city officials, Public Works, police, fire, the planning department, and understanding what are the causes of the crashes and what are potential safety measures that can be implemented. Those measures don't necessarily entail wholesale reconstruction of the intersection. They're primarily focused on signs, pavement markings, and traffic signal timing. They're primarily focused on signs, pavement markings, and traffic signal timing. So we've suggested for the board to consider potentially asking that a road safety audit be done at that location, and then at a baseline level, looking at the traffic signal timing because that intersection is operating with specific approaches that are at or over capacity. There are delays associated with that. So the combination of the road safety audit and a baseline level looking at re-timing the traffic signal focused on the yellow and all-red clearance intervals, those are the typical safety parameters at the intersection, and then pedestrian crossing times. So those are really the three areas of a signal that are focused on safety, and so we've suggested that as a part of this project, that those are some things that may be able to be undertaken at that intersection. Again, not significantly costly improvements that would need to be undertaken because we are sensitive relative to not only the impact of the project, but also that it's an affordable housing project as well. So from the transportation study, that's what we've suggested might be considered by the board. Now focusing more on the site, there's a couple of things on the site plan that we've suggested for the board's consideration. They deal with parking, parking off-site along Ting Street, but also parking within the project site itself. We do not object to the one space per unit. We think that's appropriate, especially in an urban environment. The Lowell Regional Transit Authority has a bus stop right in front of the project site, so we think that this site is certainly suited and situated in a manner that the can have reduced traffic demands but also reduce parking demands because of that. However, one space per unit means that those spaces need to be functional. They need to be sized appropriately so people will use them. There needs to be maneuverability within the garage. We've commented to the applicant that as we look at functionality of parking, really what we're talking about is the dimensions of the parking area. And so typically, what we look at for functionality is the wall-to-wall distance in a parking garage should be fifty-nine feet if you measured from face of wall to face of wall in the parking garage. That allows for an eighteen-foot parking space with a twenty-three-foot drive aisle and then another eighteen-foot parking space behind that. The applicant has proposed a fifty-six-foot parking module, and the way that they've come up with that shortened module is the drive aisle is only twenty feet. So they have an eighteen-foot parking space, a twenty-foot drive aisle with an eighteen-foot parking space, and when you look at those dimensions, a standard vehicle as we designed them is nineteen feet long. That's what we use as a design vehicle. So if you imagine if the vehicle's parked in the parking space and I only provide twenty feet behind that vehicle, you can just basically pull your vehicle straight out, and then you're stuck if there's a vehicle parked behind you. So in order to maneuver within that limited dimension, you have to make a multiple-point turn. We asked the applicant to provide to us, if they couldn't increase the dimensions, to provide a turning analysis of the vehicle in the garage, and you do have a turning analysis as a part of the response that was submitted. And if you look at that closely, what you'll see is because of those constrained dimensions, if a vehicle is parked in the space and there's a vehicle on either side, what you see is as it's swinging, it's going into those adjacent parking spaces, and then when it backs up, it backs all the way up to the bumper of the vehicle that's behind them. So what it's demonstrating to us is that need for that fifty-nine-foot parking module to have the spaces be functional. So we've asked them to look at ways that they might be able to provide for some more maneuvering area. The other thing is to achieve the one parking space per unit, what they've done is they do have some compact parking spaces, which again, we do not object to that. However, the dimensions of those parking spaces are confining to the extent that they really wouldn't be functional unless you had a tiny vehicle going in those spaces. The spaces are only six feet wide. So if you look at a standard dimension for compact parking spaces, the width is at least seven feet wide. And again, what it gets to is if you put a vehicle, it's a standard vehicle in those parking spaces, or even a standard compact vehicle in those spaces, you're going to have very difficult, difficulty opening the doors. There's really not enough room to open the doors of those cars. So while we agree that the fifty-two parking spaces is appropriate, the functionality of those spaces, I think, we're questioning just because of the dimensions that are provided in there. So we point that out to the board because we think that the parking garage itself, from a functionality standpoint, is going to be extremely tight and more confining than we would like to see, and we definitely question the functionality of the compact parking spaces. So those comments are in our latest letter that we've delivered. We did provide those comments as a part of our initial letter, and I think the applicant's response to those comments were basically that, you know, they are trying to maximize the parking. We understand that. The real concern, and I think what you're hearing both from the abutters, is about the nature of off-site parking. If the garage doesn't function properly, that's going to lead to off-site parking. Now focusing lastly on Ting Street, we do understand the need to provide that on-street parking. Again, if we point to the applicant's turning analysis that was provided, it clearly demonstrates that delivery vehicles and a fire truck, when they swing to come in to service the property, go through those parking spaces. So I think what we do is we would, based on what you heard as the abutters comments that the fire trucks were able to get in there, will defer to the Lowell Fire Department as to adequacy, but the turning analysis the applicant provided led to our recommendation because the swept path of the fire truck takes out forty feet of parking. So if the fire department says that they can turn better, and there's nothing to say that they might not be able to do that, their vehicle may be able to turn at tighter radius, then that's fine. However, the turning analysis the applicant provided does indicate the need to restrict parking, and that's why we had recommended that as a part of our review. So that's the, kind of hits the high points of our review. Again, from an impact analysis, the project does not have a significant impact with the exception of that one safety-related item at the intersection. So it really comes back to the site plan itself and the confined nature of the parking garage that we still have some questions about. So be happy to answer any questions you have now or later on in the evening.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant want to say anything about the traffic issues in regards to the parking as well that was brought up by Mr. Dirk?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We did have opportunity to go back and look at some of these things again today, and we think we can accommodate, the concern about the compact spaces, we're willing to meet the recommendation and provide the size that the Vaness recommends. On the aisles also, we think we can go to twenty-two-foot aisles, and that, you know, that's one foot short of what he suggested, but twenty-two feet is what's called for in the zoning code with eighteen-foot depth. And so we can move, we think, the first floor slightly into the courtyard on the west side and accommodate. So if the board was so inclined to impose a condition, we think we can meet the twenty-two-foot aisle, which is typical in the Lowell zoning code. As far as, you know, the intersection at Broadway and the road safety audit, you know, the quick math, three-hundred-and-thirty trips a day and six-sixty-six hundred trips on Broadway, that's only five percent from our project, and that's not even counting the trips on School Street. So, you know, we just don't think that this project should bear the full expense of improving an intersection that's already dangerous when we're only contributing a very minimal amount. If the city were to undertake a road safety audit, the applicant's willing to contribute to that, and we'd offer a $10,000 contribution to the road safety audit. And I think the only other point was the fire truck issue on Ting Street, and again, I just point out that that's been an existing condition for thirty or more years without an issue, and we're proposing not to alter it in any way. So I think the points regarding the parking issue inside the structure are well-taken. We think we can address those, and we'll submit a revised design to accommodate that.
Thank you.
And the traffic people are here, if you want, want more detailed analysis.
Fran, just for the record, we haven't received anything from the fire department, have we? At least, I haven't seen it if we have. Any comments in the fire department, do you know?
I don't believe we've received any comments from the fire department.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, if nobody else wants to speak, anybody else want to be heard? If not, I'll turn it over to the board members. Anybody else? Nobody else? Okay. I'll turn over. Any board members have any questions, comments?
Just want to, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the guest parking, that would be included in the comment you made, Mr. Martin. There was some reference to the university.
Oh, so yeah, so there is a university lot that's available to the public on Wilder Street, about a five-minute walk away. That is available to the public off-hours. We've made several trips there in the evening. It's about thirty-five spaces, appears to be not used very heavily at night. You know, roughly eight or nine spaces were occupied on our visits, so that's an option for our guests, and...
Where is that located?
It's off Wilder Street. You know, if you go down Broadway, there's a big university parking lot at Broadway and Wilder. It's not that one, but it's further, I guess, south on Wilder Street near Batcholder.
Yeah, I know what you mean. Okay, thank you. That's all I have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Anybody else? May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bichette.
Attorney Martin, yesterday morning, I actually walked from that parking lot to the site, and there was sidewalks all the way to that parking lot on Batcholder Street, and it was a quicker walk than I thought it was going to be. And being a Sunday morning, if residents were using it, there certainly were quite a few open spaces, so that made me feel pretty good about the overflow, although it does exceed the distance. We're looking for this type of reuse four-hundred feet, and I think I paced it out at around six-hundred of my steps, and my steps aren't very large, so it wasn't too bad to get there. So I was actually surprised because that was a concern that I had, although typically we've seen in the past with affordable housing in the city, there's fewer demand for parking spots, although you are going to have multi-bedroom units. I want to start out with some, a lot of the positive aspects of this. I really like the design aspects of the project. I think of George Proakis when I look at the, that whole concept as we talked about, I think, almost eighteen years ago now on large structures, and to eliminate just exactly what you said, the canyon effect, is to have that step back from the upper floors so you don't have the mass of that building on the street. So I really like the way that came out. No matter what you were going to do with this site, and this is kind of a dilemma, and Counselor, you were the chair of the zoning subcommittee when we passed all of this, and I was probably the most involved resident in the city Lowell at the time when we looked at all of this. Looking at the existing conditions in the housing that was there, the existing zoning seemed pretty consistent. However, when you look at a lot this size to apply the zoning, you know, to meet the zoning, I think you're looking at about using the lot area per dwelling unit at around six units. So obviously, that didn't make any sense. So obviously, I think to do anything, there was going to have to be some relief from that that would be sought. I really wish, you know, you did come to us for a pre-application hearing. I would have liked to have seen some fewer units and some visitor parking on-site. I understand what you're trying to do here. I think from an architectural perspective, I am a believer in density by design. I think it can be achieved in the right location. It was noted, and I think we noted at the pre-application hearing, the proximity to the park that's along the Francis Gate, so it really does provide some recreational space for residents that are living there, as well as accessibility to really the riverfront right from that park. So it was actually, from that perspective, was, is a positive thing. There's no question it fits a need for affordable housing in the city. The city does a fantastic job providing affordable housing, and housing that is affordable compared to the surrounding communities in this greater Lowell area. We continue to do our share, so it certainly would add to that. I do have a question. When I was at the site, it looks like there's a parking area across the street on Broadway. Is that available at all? Did you explore that? I don't even know what that is.
We don't know. We don't have control over that and really don't know who has not been part of our research and our title work. It's across the street.
Fran, do any idea what that?
I'll look to see the ownership, and I'll let you know.
Yeah, I mean, it looked like it was prepared for parking, and there wasn't one car in there on Sunday morning, which I thought was interesting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the comment, Bob Alavich. That is the old man's Dodge. It's owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, part of the Heritage Park.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. I wonder if that, is that, Bob, you know if it's for the Francis Gate?
It was part of the state. I'm sure it's purchased as part of the Francis Gate development, but I don't know what their plans were after the National Park came to town.
Okay. I mean, I think that, Counselor, that might be worth even exploring.
So we did take a look, obviously, in our research on Ting Street to see what's owned in the vicinity, and there is quite a bit of Commonwealth of Massachusetts property, so that wouldn't surprise me at all.
Sure.
If it's theirs, but it would also, whether the state would make, you know, state land available for parking on a private project, I'm skeptical.
Yeah, no, understood, understood. Question regarding Ting Street in the agreement, the conditions that were presented from the Housing Authority, is just, and this might be more to Attorney Murphy, I'm just, I want clarification, it's a private way. Who is actually, at some point, the Housing Authority had to be, had been given authority to reserve the parking spaces, and it looks like, you know, access was granted through an easement from the locks and canals to the applicant. So the applicant is not really granting the right, it's just the applicant acknowledging the fact that that exists? Is that the purpose of this?
Under the law, any abutter to a private way has the right to pass and repass over that private way, as long as they don't overburden that private way. For example, they couldn't put a, we couldn't, at Francis Gatehouse Mill, put a fence up on Ting Street to prevent people from going up and down Ting Street. However, what we can do is we can park our vehicles on Ting Street as long as it doesn't overburden the other abutters' rights to access Ting Street. And in this case, the residents of this new development would be able to go buy these cars that are parked there right now and access the residences if they are allowed to be built.
The exclusive parking, because I have pictures of the signs, so the exclusive parking for the Housing Authority, who granted that right?
Nobody granted it. We just, we've just been using it for over twenty years, and we believe we have the absolute right to use those parking spots, so that's why we have put up the signs that they reserve for the Housing Authority employees.
So I'm trying...
We've never brought any, we've never brought any court action to do it, but quite honestly, nobody has questioned it until now because nobody's used Ting Street.
Understood, exactly.
Unless, except the Francis Gatehouse Mill residents and employees. That's why...
Which is a Housing Authority-managed property.
And we own the Hadley House right across the street.
So I guess with that, I'm just trying to clarify, you know, they're not really giving permission, they're just acknowledging...
We have, yeah, that we're not overburdening the private way, and we're allowed to keep our vehicles there. They're going to use every commercial responsibility to make sure that nobody impacts our right to park there negatively.
Okay. I was trying to understand if there was some legal authority to actually reserve that parking, but is it...
Yeah, they would have the right, as an abutter to the private way, they would have the right to park cars there.
As it exists right now, right.
No, but what they're doing is they're giving us the right to park ours rather than theirs.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. And I do want to thank you, and Attorney Martin, you did point out, because I had it here, I know Vaness and Associates, they were recommending the twenty-three-foot driveline for...
lane for ninety-degree angle, and the zoning ordinance, the TMF zone, is twenty-two feet for angled parking at seventy-six to ninety degrees. So as long as you can comply with the zoning code, do you think you're going to lose any spots as a result of that?
No.
Fran, I have to ask the question, a traffic audit of that intersection, if the applicant's willing to contribute ten thousand dollars, I don't even know what would the cost of that be? And is that more for, Counselor, is that more for the implementation of any signalization timing, or is that for the audit?
Well, for the audit, I think. That was our intent, not for what would come out of that.
Fran, has there been any discussion with staff prior to this? Is this the first that you're hearing of any contribution towards that function?
Yes, we haven't really discussed it.
Okay. And I want to thank Jeffrey Durick again. I think you, especially at a time when we do not have a real traffic engineer on staff, it's valuable to get input such as this, and appreciate everything you bring to the, to every review, peer review that you have conducted in the time that I have been here anyways. The, would that, Counsel, would that require, did I hear that correctly, would that require a change to the landscape plan? Is there going to be a...
Well, we would basically expand the impervious area by a few feet.
Okay.
Not on the property, toward the interior courtyard. So, yes, there'd be two feet less of, I guess, courtyard space available on the first floor.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Fischette. Any other board members have any questions? Caleb, any questions?
Um, not particularly, but I do want to express, like, also that I'm receptive to the conditions that was proposed, and then also the transportation, which I think, from the last meeting, was the biggest concern, and I think we're pretty close to an agreeable situation here, and I appreciate that the applicant was willing to recognize that, you know, the safety concern down the intersection. I don't know whether we have agreement or whether, like, your suggestion will be appropriate, but I do at least want to appreciate the recognition that this project does play a part into adding some traffic into the intersection. And I think the other concern I had was the massing of the building, and I think the historic board and the applicant worked a great job to make it work on the site. So with both of that addressed, I look forward to working with the board to figure out, like, how to approach or resolve the remaining issues.
Thank you, Caleb. Janey, any questions, comments?
I just have a few comments and one clarification. I'm also in support and just want to thank the applicant, the architect, the civil engineer. I think they did a really great job designing and laying out the building on the site, and I really like the response to the historic board comments and everything, so thank you. I just want to commend that. I'm also receptive, like Caleb, to the proposed conditions that were outlined in the staff report, and also the number of conditions that the traffic peer review resulted in in terms of widening, widening the way to twenty-two feet and kind of resolving the compact car parking. I would comment that, you know, there's been a little bit of back and forth about the fire department access. I would just comment that I think it would be maybe as part of the condition that they have to kind of get that piece approved by the fire department. We usually have comments from them, so I was just surprised that there wasn't a comment in regard to that. And then finally, this is just a clarification, maybe for the architect or the civil engineer. I was wondering if they could just give us a brief outline of which sidewalks will be rebuilt as a result of this project, and will they be accessible. I think it kind of outlined that they were on Broad Street, but the plans look like it maybe is also down Ting Street.
Sure. So Brian Goddrew from Hancock.
Yeah, so as part of this project, across the entire front edge of Broadway Street, those sidewalks are going to be reconstructed. So there's a loading area there, and right now, it's just wide-open curb cut, so that open curb cut's going to get closed up, and then sidewalks replaced according to city standards.
But not down Ting Street?
Not down Ting Street. Ting Street's intended to remain the same, so the only alteration of Ting Street is actually in the garage entrance, which is towards the backside of the building.
Thank you. That answers my question. That's all for now, thanks.
Thank you. Russell, any questions or comment?
I think most of the issues have been addressed so far. I want to reiterate what Member Galifin mentioned earlier about access from, for the fire department, so some sort of, just make a condition that the plans are reviewed by the fire department and approved prior to building permit. I think that's all my comments, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. Bob, any questions?
The only, yeah, I think this is a great project. One issue I have is, where is the staff going to be parking?
I think his question is, any staff parking?
Yeah, where are they going to park?
Mr. Chairman, Rich Mazaki with Boston Capital Development, I can respond to that. Maloney Properties will be our property manager. They manage, I think it's about five hundred units in Lowell, so they will have roving staff throughout the city that parks from time to time nearby the property, but not necessarily on a full-time basis. So I would imagine this would be parking at that UMass Lowell-Wilder Street Lot is the most likely case.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing I had, I was looking at snow removal, and it appears that the only removal is going to be sidewalks, so it really isn't an issue. But I think this is a good project. I watched the original LTC film of the original meeting with the claim board that was got there, and this has come a long way from then. So I'm really encouraged by what the thing is proposed now. I could really support that.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Yes, Mr. Fischette, go ahead.
Counselor, on the comment letter from DPD, one of the, item number six, proposed condition, and I just, we didn't really discuss it, the applicant shall either reserve spaces for each dwelling unit or only allow access to parking via parking pass to residents to ensure each resident has one parking space. I guess we didn't discuss that at all. What, how is that going to be handled?
So either a pass or a gate access, we haven't, I think, decided on that, but I think at the original hearing, you know, there was discussion, how are you going to, it's got to be one-for-one correlation, and we will agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
So I just have a couple of comments. Number one, I'm very happy to see that we got the access on Ting Street through the covenant easement. That was a big concern I had in the past. So I think the big question now will be whether there'll be parking on Ting Street or not. We have not received the letter from the fire department. I know the Lowell Housing Authority doesn't want it there, the applicant does want it there. Mr. Durick indicated that the sweep of the traffic, that they might not be able to park there, but without further information from the fire department, I think we're at a standstill, to be honest with you. But I'm sure one person doesn't want it, somebody does, someone says we should look into it. So obviously, I think, one way or another, we have to find out from the fire department. I mean, you say they didn't have it there before, but there wasn't fifty-three new units there. Whenever you build something new, everything changes. People always say, "It's been there all the time," but now we're changing it, now you're changing it, now it changed the access to the site, changed the access to the fire department getting in there. So I think that's something we have to hear from the fire department before we can answer that question. And I think it's something that we should, I mean, we're looking at a special permit here, as well as a site plan, and for site plan, again, it comes down to access. With, I mean, maybe the fire department says, well, what if the fire department comes back and says, "Just twenty feet down the road instead of forty." How would that satisfy the Housing Authority? How would that satisfy the applicant? Don't know. So I don't like to leave that as a condition hanging out there, because then we go back and look at the site later, we don't know what the final decision is. So that's one concern I have. The other question I had was, I mean, the concern, I'm not concerned, but a thing that came up was the road safety audit. It was brought up by Mr. Durick, it might, it's a good suggestion, what it would take the cost and how they'd do that, I have no idea. And of course, if the applicant wanted to give money towards the city, then obviously, that's not, outside the planning board's purview, obviously, that has to go through the city council, the city manager, whatever, to accept money from anybody from the city. So that would be outside of our purview, how somebody would make a donation. I mean, who would approve it and how would it be done, or what the cost would even be, and then if we had one, and then if the cost comes out, what the cost may be to implement what the recommendation of the road safety audit would be. So I don't know if we could look into finding out more through staff somehow, or find out through, more through the Director of Planning and Development, what's the way we could pursue that, or what information we can get back, if that's feasible or not, to find out. I mean, because, I mean, you look at it, you know, it's fifty-three units, and don't forget, it's traditional multifamily unit. I mean, it's, you know, you look down the street, a lot of the houses are three, four family. Two-family, three-family, drive up and down Broadway, most all of them are two to three family. So it's, I mean, technically, if you look at the zone, it's really not zoned for this. It's basically creating spot zone by variance, circumventing the zoning. So I think the more information we can receive, the better off we are. I understand the part of the building's there, but obviously, a big, big, huge part of it's going to be all brand-new. So those are the concerns I have, is, but the fire department's going to save. I think it'll change a lot of people's opinion on how are we going to address the issue that the fire department brings up. So I think that's a crucial part that we need before we go forward. So I don't know if you want us to give you more time to find out that, Mr. Martin, or whatever, but I think that's a question that has to be answered before, I know I feel comfortable voting.
All right, fair enough. There was a suggestion that perhaps that could be a condition, but that's not...
Well, I mean, I don't, I think the condition leaves everybody hanging. I mean, so what the fire, so what if the fire department comes back and says twenty feet? Then what do we do?
So I think we need to come back to you at that point.
You know, I mean, is the Housing Authority agreeable to that? Maybe not. I don't know. So if the fire department comes in and says, "Close it down forty feet," or "Keep it open," I don't know. I mean, it changes people's perspective on the whole project coming down Ting Street. You know, so it's not like we're saying, forty feet, it's a distant marker that they might agree to or disagree to, and then what do we do?
But if you agree to this condition with the sixteen spaces, and we're going to alter that, I think we have to come back to the board.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. You know, I mean, I'm glad that you can, you can make the change to accommodate the parking inside the garages indicated, to make those safety turns. I mean, telling you talking about a small car backing up and backing in, if somebody has a big SUV, and more people have those, I mean, the SUVs today than ever in the past. You know, years ago, when I was younger, they were always station wagons, but now they're all SUVs, so they wouldn't fit in these spots, so really, the parking would be diminished. So obviously, if you could accommodate that new parking situation, find out what the fire department's going to do, and if we could get some indication back from staff about what the road safety audit would detail, or at least give us some more information on that. Those are just the concerns I have, so. Any of the board have any comments as a result of what I said, or anybody else has said since we've been discussing, or?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with your sentiments. I just think if it comes back with an alternate option from the fire department, it really changes what we've approved.
Yeah, yeah.
And this particular case, I think we do have to have, especially where we actually have a recommendation from a traffic engineer to have no parking forty feet down the street, and then we have an abutter requesting that that not be implemented. I think in the recommendation is a result of concern over safety on the site getting fire apparatus. I think we need to get an official, something official from the fire department relative to that. And I would like to see if they could make the changes to the plan, accommodating the twenty-two-foot drive lane, and then the change to the pervious area versus the impervious area, the landscaping. I think that would, again, that would be, that would be helpful.
So, Mr. Chairman, if the board's willing, we'd ask for, I guess, and agree to a continuance till the next meeting? I think that's enough time.
Fran, how are we looking for the next meeting, or should we go out two meetings, depending, if you could tell us what we have on the agenda, so I don't know if that gives everybody enough time to look into the fire department and get back to us? I mean, because usually, once they get the plans, they come, and the plans, they come back, then goes back again, and we're only talking two weeks, right?
Yeah, so in two weeks, we have two agenda items and an other business item.
Okay.
That's for the twenty-first, and then on the second, we have just one other business item.
Which one, the second of May?
The second of May, we just have the traffic study for the Patacafield Market Basket.
So May second, be all right.
May second? All right, so if the applicant's agreeable, I'd be willing to make a motion that we continue this public hearing till May second, to get some more information as indicated by myself and other board members. I mean, as Mr. Fischette said, the parking, look into the feasibility of, most importantly, the, look into feasibility of what a road safety audit would be, and as well as get recommendation from the fire department.
Can I make one other comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I just, I looked at the plans again after the clarification comment about the sidewalks, and the plan does indicate that it's a proposed bituminous concrete walkway per city standards along Ting Street. So I would just ask that at the next meeting, if you clarify whether that's the intent, and if you don't, that the board maybe consider that that's a condition, that that sidewalk is brought to city standards. I think, given the size of the project, that that's appropriate. Thank you, that's all.
That's, we'll come back with something on that. I did want to clarify on the safety audit. I mean, I think we're agreeable to contribute to the cost of the audit if the city feels that's something necessary, but as far as the improvements go, we just don't think this project should be bearing the expense of the improvements, that's...
Well, the question, I mean, what if they came back and showed me one, two signs? You'd say, no?
Well, no.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, what expense would be? I mean, is just timing a signal light, or what? I don't know. I mean, there's precedent that if you have a project of this size, and you ask them to do something off-site, and it comes to signalization, it's well within our authority, there's no doubt about that. Case law comes from Tuksh Bay, the neighboring town. So I mean, I consider it would be, what would it be, and what would it be detailed? That's why we get more information from staff. Obviously, if they had something that comes out in favor of it, and then even if you said you want to make a donation, how far would that go to implement some of that? I think a lot of that stuff, none of us here this evening know anything about, to be honest with you. So if we get more information on that, it would be helpful, you know? How we could do that, Fran, check in, get back and share with the applicant as well, but I mean, but yeah, I mean, you know, if you come in with, you know, if it was less units, I would agree with you, fifty-three in that area, and... less units, I would agree with you, 53 in that area, and I think it opens it up, I do. So if everybody in agreement, I'll make a motion that we continue this matter till May 2nd.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In opposition, hearing none, vote, chair votes yes. So the matter's continued until May 2nd. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Murphy, thank you, Jeffrey Durk, and thank you, everybody else who spoke this evening, appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along on the agenda. We have nothing listed in the new business. Under other business, we have an MBTA zoning presentation. Staff will present recent changes to Mass General Law Chapter 48 pertaining to zoning changes that would be required in MBTA communities over the next several years. I believe Fran's going to give us the presentation, so... So Fran, whenever you're ready for MBTA...
Yes, hold on.
...presentation.
Okay. Thank you, planning board members. So today, I'm going to be talking about the MBTA communities legislation that was recently passed by the state. First, I'll start with some background information, then I'll run through the draft guidelines, the impact on Lowell, the key dates that we need to pay attention to, and next steps. So the MBTA communities legislation was, is part of a bill that was passed in January 2021. So a new section was created within Mass General Law Chapter 48, which requires that every MBTA community has at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing, which is three or more units, is permitted as of right and meets other criteria set forth in the statute. So the criteria that it needs to meet includes having a minimum gross density of 15 acres, 15 units per acre. It is not located more than a half mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. There's no age restrictions on the housing, and the housing is suitable for families with children. One thing that is important to note is that municipalities that are considered MBTA communities that do not comply with this new legislation become ineligible for a variety of state funding sources, including the Mass Works grants, housing choice grants, and local capital projects funds. Lowell utilizes these grants all the time. The Mass Works grants were used for infrastructure, or will be used for infrastructure improvements associated with the acre crossing development. The housing choice monies were used to fund our parking study, so these are funding sources that Lowell uses all the time. So this is a map that illustrates the communities that are considered MBTA communities. So the darkest blue communities are those that are connected to the MBTA via subway. The medium blue communities have MBTA buses. The darker green color means that there's a commuter rail stop, and then the light green means that it's a community that is adjacent to a commuter rail community. So this section of Chapter 48 mandated that the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, issue guidance on basically interpreting the new legislation. And they provide clarity to the legislation, including what does it mean to permit multifamily housing as of right? So what does "as of right" mean? What is a district of reasonable size? How do we determine if a multifamily district has a minimum gross density of 15 acres, units per acre? How do we determine whether that housing is suitable for families with children? And then flexibility that each community has to choose the location of that multifamily district. So DHCD did issue draft guidance for communities on December 15th, 2021, and we'll be running through some of the key takeaways from that guidance in the next slides. So by "as of right," which I'm sure the board is very familiar with, it means that the applicant would not need to obtain discretionary permits, so they would not need to get a special permit for the use or variances. Actually, scratch that, it wouldn't be variances. They wouldn't need a special permit to have that use there. Site plan review may be used to regulate features of a development, but may not be used to deny a development that is allowed as of right, or... Yeah, okay. The next... Yeah, sure.
So I know in Lowell, the three and four units of development approved for it would require special permission, so that's, that would be not fitting?
Exactly, yes. Would not be in compliance. By a reasonable size, the guidance says that the minimum land area... It, the district cannot be a single development site, first of all, and then it should be at least 50 acres of land, approximately one-tenth of the area within a half mile of a transit station. Overlay districts are allowed, but within certain conditions, so at least one portion of the overlay district land areas must include at least 25 contiguous acres of land. No portion of the district that is less than five contiguous acres of land will count toward the minimum size requirement. And then there's also a minimum capacity requirement in this, I can read the subsection, but it's a bit confusing. Reasonably sized multifamily district must also be able to accommodate a reasonable number of multifamily units as of right. A compliant district's multifamily unit capacity must be equal to or greater than a specified percentage of the total number of housing units within the community. The required percentage will depend on the type of transit service in the community as follows. So we follow under the commuter rail community category. My understanding of this is that this means that 15% of our total housing stock in Lowell, that number, there, there needs to be, be at least that number of multifamily units in this given district. That's my interpretation of that. However, that is, is a capacity, that number is a capacity to produce a certain number of units. It doesn't mean that, it's not a mandate to produce however many units of housing that is. It's not a goal, a housing production goal, it's just a capacity requirement. So the effects of noncompliance, if DHCD determines that an MBTA community is not in compliance with this section of Chapter 48, the MBTA community will not be eligible for funds from the following grant programs: Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Projects Fund, and Mass Works. And they, in addition to that, they may also take noncompliance into consideration when making other discretionary grant awards, so it could potentially affect funding sources in other areas for the city, not just those three areas. So important dates to take note of, by May 2nd, 2022, we are required to submit an MBTA community information form to DHCD and hold a briefing of the city council on the draft compliance guidelines. We've already done that, so we are in compliance with that impending deadline. By March 31st of 2023, we must provide DHCD with a proposed action plan and timeline for any planning studies or community outreach activities that we intend to undertake in order to adopt a district that's in compliance with this new section. And then by December 31st, 2023, so a year and a half, a little over a year and a half from now, we must adopt the zoning amendment by the date specified in the action plan and timeline approved by DHCD. So in terms of next steps, so the end of last year, 2021, we received a grant from Mass Development to create a TOD plan within a half-mile radius of the Gallagher Station. In January of this year, we released an RFP and selected a consultant, Stantec, on January 24th, and we are working with Stantec to kick off the project, to create a transit-oriented development district that would be compliant with these guidelines. The goals of this plan are to enhance the regional and local significance of the city, engage the community in the conversation, do a lot of community outreach, promote revenue-generating commercial and high-density residential land uses in that area, encourage alternative transportation options, open space in entertainment recreational amenities. The plan will both help us understand market conditions for development, but also assess our current zoning, and one of the asks that we included in the RFP was to actually draft zoning changes that, based on the outreach and the research that was conducted, draft proposed changes, and then we would present those to the council and to the planning board for review and discussion. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Fran. Any of the board members have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Fran, I was hoping you could go back to the section on guidance on compliance with the, where you referenced the minimum multifamily units as a percentage of total housing stock. So am I understanding this right, that the goal of this legislation is to almost create like a percentage? So we, we would take our total housing stock and multiply that by 15%, and that would be the number of units that would have to be allowed to be permitted as of right in this, in this new zoning?
That's also my understanding.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Do we know how many housing units we have in Lowell?
I don't know that.
Okay. Census question, I guess.
Yes, I would definitely know.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
May I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Are you done, Russell?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Jeffrey, I didn't want to cut you off. Okay.
So, Fran, what, I just want to make sure, what's being presented, though, would be potential zoning changes to comply specifically with this, this, this location, as far as the transit?
Correct, yes, and the plan would be focused, we were looking into doing this transit-oriented development overlay district anyway.
Right.
And they complement each other, and would, by implementing the overlay district, it would bring us into compliance with this legislation.
I mean, when you look at the zoning that's there now, it's still pretty good stuff, TMF, UMU, TMF, TMU. We got some light industry, obviously, that has an effect, and that's all part of the, that's a, an urban plan. What's the Hale Street, I think any changes to that? That's...
What, Tanis Street?
The Tanis Street, no, not Tanis Street. There's also...
The Hale Howard.
The Hale Howard, yeah. But that's interesting, okay. And it doesn't forego site plan review on larger projects, then obviously, part of the reason why a lot of the special permits would have been put in place, because the board doesn't really have a lot of teeth with site plan review, so it gets a little frustrating for the boards, depending on what's coming, we call them. I guess I just, you know, comment to the other board members here, and I was talking to Fran before the, the meeting. You know, and as a representative to Nemco, we've been looking at this, and obviously, it affects some of the other communities in the area, and I think it stems back to a poor piece of legislation with the housing choice bill, where it, it really is giving the wealthier communities an out, and they're still relying on the gateway cities to bear the burden. And I just, in my day job, we get the Banker and Tradesman, if anybody's familiar with this, a lot of good articles, and that gives you transactions throughout the, the state. But I thought this was interesting, this was a quote from actually the town of Newton relative to, to this requirement, and of course, there's funding tied to it, and they promptly said that they would be happy to forego the Mass Works infrastructure grants in order to avoid the zoning for more multifamily homes. And, and it's, this is what's coming across from like-minded communities, and so it's a little, you know, from somebody that's a lifelong resident of the city of Lowell, and five generations in here, my children are raising their children here, it's insulting to me. But at the end of the day, we're, we're asked to bear the burden on a lot of this. Understandable, I think in our current zone, I think it's going to fit in a, a lot of what's there right now, but I think this leads to bigger things that we'll be looking at within the city. But I think it's unfortunate. Very difficult to do, to try to get any meaningful legislation passed at the state level in order to have the surrounding communities here in the city of Lowell to really comply and meet the needs of, of the housing needs. You know, there's, there's, there's a need in the state of Massachusetts, in New England, and across the country, but in the greater Lowell area, we do more than our share, and as far as providing housing that's affordable, we are in a housing bubble. We've had, you know, record appreciation in real estate since COVID, oddly enough, and so it's created even, it's compounded the housing crisis, but at the end of the day, I'll show you transactions, you can't touch real estate for what it's going for in the city of Lowell. We are the most affordable choice right now. It may not be a good choice, as far as, because of the values, but I was looking at the transaction reports from one of, one of the Banker and Tradesmen, we had seven condo units that sold in the city of Lowell, this is recent, for under $200,000. Can't find anything in any of the surrounding towns close to that. So again, I, you know, we got to put all of this in perspective, but this is, this is what I find upsetting when I see this kind of, you know, they, they tie, the state ties funding to this, somehow that's going to be the hammer, but it's the hammer to the poorer communities that rely on the funding. It's not, doesn't do anything to the wealthy communities who aren't doing their fair share. So, and that's my, that's my, my, my thoughts on that. I've never was a wallflower when it comes to this, so, and I am concerned, I think, I think for us, I think it's a good fit, honestly, I think, but I do, I do think there's value in the, in the special permits. I can bring you, and again, my day job, I've been doing this for 42 years, I do construction financing, you ought to see what it's like to get a project approved through some of these other communities. It doesn't happen here in the city of Lowell. So despite people hear what goes on elsewhere, and they try to apply it here, we have special permits, but it hasn't stopped a lot of projects here in the city of Lowell, and we don't tie big construction projects up for years in the land use boards here, and we don't deny projects that should be approved and tell them, "Go ahead, sue us," and, and fight it and appeal. We don't do that here. So when people take that mentality and try to make that argument here in the city of Lowell, I take offense to it, because I've sat in here now for, what, 16 years, Mr. Chairman? Have we done that?
No.
No. No, as a city, we have not done that. So I think there's, there's going to be a lot to be said going forward on all of this. I think there's some, some, some good as far as what the city of Lowell has to offer and how we can accommodate some of this, but I think we have to be very careful not to create a bad situation here in the city, trying to solve everybody else's housing issues.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, absolutely.
I also, I wanted to add, so you noticed on the map, right now, the area surrounding the station is kind of a patchwork of different zoning districts. And so, before we even knew this legislation was coming out, we were, we were planning to move forward with a transit-oriented development overlay district. There's already been a study, but moving forward with actually doing planning for that and creating a plan with the thought that Lowell is going to see develop, increased development pressure in the future. And we really do want to be proactive and prescriptive about setting the tone in that area and doing a lot of community outreach to determine what people would like to see in terms of another kind of like complementary mixed-use district that is well-connected to the downtown, because Lord Overpass is going to be completed hopefully soon. So I just wanted to provide you with some context on that. But I think it's possible and complementary to that, to that area. So for Lowell, I don't think it's, I think it will complement our efforts nicely here.
And I think to your point, Fran, I think what prompted that to even in the city is, and it was supposed, it was 40A. 40A was to encourage development around transit. And it didn't do it in the communities they thought it was going to do it in. And so now they're, you know, but again, there's still an out. They don't, they don't have to comply. But again, I think for us, I think it'll fit. But I think there needs to be a conversation to put it in context with the other communities. Because I think we, there are certain areas where I think critical mass is required in order for businesses to succeed here in the downtown. But I think as we look at this and how we want to apply this to the city as a whole, we can really change the city in a bad way, too. So I look forward to conversations on this in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make an assumption that we may be already at 15% of our housing stock in subsidy or in multifamily. We may already meet the standard without having to green the district.
So just be mad at putting it in a zone. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Any of the Board members have any further comments or questions about the upcoming proposal and the deadlines?
I look forward to the consultant study.
Can I just ask, can I just make another comment?
Sure.
At NEMCOG, we had somebody from the administration speak earlier on the Housing Choice Law and asked the question, "Are you going to be tracking the actual housing it creates in the communities you're hoping to spark development?" You know what the answer was? No. They said, "You can't." So, just kind of interesting. It's just very, very interesting. And like I said, the gateway cities are doing more than their share to try to address a housing need, but the other communities just aren't doing it.
Yeah, it's been the same way for 40 years.
Forty years, Chapter 40, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further comments from any other Board members?
The historic one, we've gone over that today, but I do want to make a comment. We had a special meeting on March 31st, just to cover the 733, 735 Broadway Street project, to keep that moving along. And I, you know, Steve and the architectural team that he put together did an exceptional job in enhancing that building down there. Just did a great job.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Don't move, Mr. Chairman. Motion's made.
Second.
Ten seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. We are adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone. I'll put my soapbox away now.
There he is, that zoning matter for...
They, pretty much, so, yeah. We haven't done too many changes, so it's just a few changes.
Yeah, and this is a...
Here's the one online. I didn't know they had more.
Well, I had this one, no, this, so this is one when I was actually working on the master plan in Potteckville. Yeah. But there hasn't been a lot of changes in the zone.
Probably not.